This is dropping off a ten month old for everyone. More than four thirty call me here about.
Oh, you have my sympathy, by the way.
That what?
You have my sympathy there at the ballgame the other day. And I looked at him and he looks just like you, poor kid.
Got his mom's hair, he doesn't need to dad.
Well, I got five o'clock on my phone, so I'm going to go ahead and call meetings to order. Start with the regional business, open meetings act posted on the northwest wall as always. If anybody wants to browse that. And let's see what you've got to call roll.
Dustin?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Ken?
Here.
Brad is absent.
About us Mel, you want him to be able to be here tonight? Would you join in the fight of the region?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All of you ready? Now, the second item from the agenda. As always, you can approve all of the items in one motion or you can consider them individually if they're something you want to discuss.
I believe we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion in a second, any other discussion? You want to call roll?
Doug?
Yes.
Ken? Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. You want number three, mayor's report and you don't have anything special to report tonight, but it's on the agenda already. We'll get to some things later, so we'll move on to appointments. First one, I'd like to recommend appointing Gene Hunt to the library board to complete the term of pillars which he resigned before your term ending. What's left of it ends four thirty of twenty six.
Individual motion?
For that or for all of it?
I don't know.
I think so.
Individually?
Yeah.
You make a motion, will you approve the appointment of Gene Hunt to the library board?
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? Call roll.
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Next, we've got annual appointments. And there's a couple of things I want to hold off on. The first one is the municipal position, I talked to Mel and he's willing to do it and he's still licensed, but we discussed him. We had some questions about whether that's the best thing and I tried to contact Kenny Lawson, but we haven't got to talk yet. So I'm going to recommend that we just hold off on that one until next month if that's all right. I don't think there's anything urgent on it. And the other one would be the prosecuting attorney, you know, we've had Andy Taylor has been doing that. And I think Andy, I haven't got to talk to Andy, I believe he'd be willing to continue in that role. I know, I know some communities just have one attorney and he handles it all. So I want to talk to Michael and Andy both a little bit about whether we need them both or would can get by with just having our city attorney handle both.
Is he able like, you would only be prosecuting like ordinance violations and stuff like that, right? Does Michael able to do that in court?
Yeah, he could.
Could do, could basically?
Yeah. But he's actually is a prosecuting attorney for one community, but apparently the system that's used, there's some, they haven't got it all figured out yet, as I understand, and there's some glitches in getting registered and to utilize that. So he hasn't, he hasn't had to prosecute anything.
But I was just thinking for like, what you guys handle, it would only be code, code stuff, right?
Well, I mean potentially other things. That was one reason I think Rod always wanted, didn't want to be the prosecuting attorney because he thought there could be a conflict between the two. But I think we could cross that bridge when we came to it.
Does Andy get utilized a lot in the past and do you just pay him on a case by case basis or monthly basis or how, I don't even know how that works?
He's billed us a handful of times, you know, I don't know that it's consistent. I think it's when he has time, he just goes through and puts together what he's done for us.
Okay, so there has been?
It's not a tremendous amount.
But there's no retainer?
There hasn't been.
Would there be with my brother?
He does not do that as city attorneys.
Just be hourly there. Anyway, I still have some questions on those two. So if I hadn't said that, I'd recommend that we've made appointments of Michael Scholes as city attorney, Lisa Schradl as city administrator clerk treasurer, Brad Miller is the water sewer superintendent, Jade Eggles street forum, Lloyd Smith is our state superintendent, Bruce Papstein, our KBR solid waste rep, and West Plains Bank, Homestead Bank, Union Bank, Nebraska Public Agency Investment Trust. NBIT as our bank depositories. And Anger Star Journal, Spring New Herald, Rock County leader and KBRB radio station as publications.
After the end of the year, it's no longer a conflict of interest for you to appoint Union Bank for a depository?
I don't think there was.
I believe we approved the mayor's appointments. Do you want me to read them all again, Lisa?
Do you want to add in with the exception of those two?
With the exception?
And then you wouldn't have to?
As the mayor presented, with the exception of we're not appointing a municipal physician or prosecutor attorney at this time.
Second that. Motion in a second, any other discussion? Call roll.
Dustin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Next appointment, since we had an election with two positions available and only one person ran, thank you Ken. We need to fill that seat and I'm going to recommend that we appoint Heather Luter to fill that vacant seat. Heather contacted me, she was interested, I didn't have any other interest expressed and frankly, I contacted a lot of people and we're trying to fill Doug's spots, so I'm confident and comfortable recommending Heather for that vacancy.
Should I do a motion for this? Give the motion to approve Heather Luter to fill the vacant seat, ending in December of twenty eight.
Second. Motion in a second, any other discussion?
And Lisa, it is the full term, not in just, not to the next election to where you'd have a two-year seat and two four-year seats up?
My understanding is?
It is the full term? Okay, I didn't know, I.
I guess I could be wrong about that, but that's.
You might, you might, I don't, I don't know, I just double check because sometimes on those, it's until the next election because we've had a school board before where somebody's gone off school board and then so you got to the next election and there were like three seats for four-year terms and one seat for a two-year term. So you might, I mean just, you might just check on that and then you can amend it next month if it's only till the next election. But then you'd have a, you'd have two four-year seats and one two-year seat, you'd be. But I don't know how many, I don't know if it's different for municipalities or?
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking one of which, but I probably should.
You might just, you might just check, I don't know, I don't know. It could, it could be all four, but I don't know for sure. Might just check it.
This appointment will be to fill the vacant seat and we can, we can check the term.
There you go.
So we had a motion?
Do I need to amend it?
So that was a discussion, any other discussion? Call and call roll.
Doug?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Heather will get to you later and thank you. Moving on to item number four, public hearings.
Well, I guess.
Okay. We have a public, open public hearing on five ten. On the, or it's considered a recommendation by the planning commission to approve conditional use permit to grant step for replacement of shipping container on properly located within the one mile zone jurisdiction. It's not in the city limits, but it's within mile. You guys have probably looked at the map and are very familiar with what we're doing. Is there anybody here that would like to comment? During the public hearing?
So this property is located just along North Main Street. It's just south of Billy's Water Treatment Plant. I think it's, Salzman's have some ground out there as well. Grant bought a little portion of that from them and he's wanting to put a container beyond the, according to his diagram on his building permit, I think it's in the northeast corner of the parcel that he, he purchased. So it wouldn't be right along, you know, Main Street or anything. The planning commission, when they met on this a week ago, talked about that they did not have an issue with it themselves. They wanted the, I guess pending that there weren't any concerns by neighbors. They haven't heard anything, any opposition from any neighborhood properties. I don't know if any of you have.
Is this just for a time period or a time like a year, two years?
The conditional use permit goes, stays with the person requesting it. So as long as Grant maintains that property, he would have that conditional use permit and have that container there. If he sold the property, my understanding is whoever purchased it would have to come back and ask for a permit again on that.
So were his immediate neighbor in Salzman?
Correct.
Or? Because we did this. We divvied that out, it's been some time. Is there any presence with this, has it been done before?
The Efree Church had come and they have one, it sits back off of the highway, but they have one.
That's within the one mile.
Correct.
Good.
And then we have a couple of others in town. Of course, in the industrial zone, they're allowed to have them, so there are some like Salzer CVA and those are permitted to be there. Couple of others have come, the planning commission kind of had historically taken the line that if it was in town, it had to be of a certain color or in a certain condition or be built around, like for example, Doug Pankowski had one, but he built around it. And he built the shop. So I think in the AGR or the one miles, really the only other one that I know of is the Efree Church. And they have a conditional use permit.
I thought it was out of the one mile. Used to be.
It's just one.
It's just like there's nobody here. And we got to leave it over for a while.
How many have talked to?
Yeah, I guess.
Who am I going to talk to?
We could go on and just leave it over for a couple more minutes and take the next item of business and come back and vote on that then. So moving forward, we'll go on to old business and discuss care center funding and Danny's here from Brown County.
Good evening.
And Dan.
Well, the commissioners, we've been thinking about the agreement that we had to fund the care center before we had the election on raising the levy, you know, to fund it. And was wondering what the city had as far as plans to repay the county back approximately eighty thousand dollars that we basically loaned the city to keep the nursing home afloat until the bond issue was passed. And what I'm handing out are just the minutes of a couple of meetings that were held. Because at that time, the county or the city didn't have funds to do that. And the county went ahead and with the understanding that the city would pay the county back at a certain period of time that money that we took out of the county coffers. And I was, I'm just here tonight to start the process on asking, you know, the council to look at that and see what your payment repayment plan might be to the county.
So I did have some back and forth, Danny, with Andy Taylor.
Mm-hmm.
Did you share what I sent to him?
I haven't talked to Andy lately.
Okay, I, I did send him quite a bit of documents and minutes and things from the city side too, just to try to get, put the timeline back together and kind of get, try to get on the same page a little bit. Because I know Michael Scholes was kind of involved in that too, so he and I were going through documents. And I think, I guess just noting your minutes from the June twenty twenty-two meeting, the half that this is referencing was in regard to the emotions for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, meaning one twenty-five from the county and one twenty-five from the city.
Mm-hmm.
Our meeting minutes, and I should have printed them, I didn't print them all and bring them in, but I think the council has them in a electronic package. I think our council meeting minutes from that time period say that there was a motion on the city side that we did not want to be indebted to the county and the city came up with the one twenty-five. And we did that October of twenty-two, we paid seventy-five thousand. In November of twenty-two, we paid fifty thousand to meet that one twenty-five. So I, I think the timeline is maybe we're not on the same page in time wise and how all those events transpired, but there is a bit of a discrepancy for full transparency. According to my calculations, it's seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and change. And that comes from basically an additional eighty thousand dollars that I think happened in. I think that happened in July of twenty-two. That the county gave that was above and beyond maybe what was the original eighty that was budgeted. And the city didn't have it.
Mm-hmm.
So going back through, you know, dollar for dollar, we did give some monies that the county didn't give at different times too. So it's not a flat eighty thousand that the difference is. But I think the discussion on the city side, and the council can chime in whenever they want, was where that wasn't necessarily discussed jointly or agreed upon. You know, what the city's course of action is, if the county paid it and the city didn't have it and didn't discuss it or agree to give it, what, what is to be done in that situation?
And when you say there's a discrepancy of seventy-six thousand, you mean that the county just paid seventy-six thousand more than the city over the course of?
Over the course of the last?
Whatever year?
Nine years.
But this obligation has been fulfilled?
That one that's highlighted, yes, we did match the one twenty-five.
So is there any minutes?
I couldn't find any.
Are starting this eighty thousand dollars?
We had a lot of joint meetings back in that timeframe because I think that's when we were all kind of discussing what to do with the special levy and you know, whether we needed bonds and how we were going to go about that. And there was a few meetings.
Yeah, we, well, we sat right in here and had the one meeting. You know, we, we offered, Mr. Weeblehouse was here that night and you know, the county offered, you know, the county or the city at that time said that they didn't have the funds.
And I think that's what this meeting maybe is referencing because I think that was.
Yeah.
That we thought the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what they needed to go buy.
What they needed, yeah. But in, in the short term, they were, there was going to be a shortfall to get them, you know, before we could do that.
I think this eighty thousand then is above and beyond even this.
Yeah, right, yeah. Because we had that discussion and I know we made an offer because I got my butt chewed royally the next morning by two landowners that said the county cannot be loaning the city money. I remember those two phone calls vividly because I got called everything but a white man the next morning. The county, it was illegal for the county to loan the city money. Because we, I talked about, you know, if you didn't have the money, we would extend, you know, a note for three, four, or five years. You could pay it back over a period of years due to the county. And I thought we had a gentleman's agreement that night to do that from the people that were here at the meeting and some of your council members that are no longer council members.
Well, my recollection is that that's true, that all of that is true. But I think this eighty thousand is, is a separate even issue from, from that, that's a separate payment, separate.
So it wasn't here then every, both sides kicked in one twenty-five and then you put in another eighty?
Or seventy-six, whatever.
I think we had done each our eighty that we had originally budgeted in the agreement.
And then?
Plus the one twenty-five and then the county.
And then the county kicked in another eighty or seventy?
Well, it was eighty, but this.
I just said approximately, I mean, that's, that's what had been planned before.
Correct.
Yes.
And so.
So it, I mean, what you're saying with your research that we, we probably owe the county seventy-six thousand dollars, is that correct?
I think depending on how you look at it.
Well, it wouldn't be necessarily seventy-six, you could either pay the care center that full amount or you could work it out to pay the county half of it and then you'd be equalized that way if the care center.
Yeah, right.
Doesn't need it at this point, which I don't believe they probably do. Ken was at a meeting yesterday or Monday, so it doesn't sound like they're in dire straits and needing more, so.
Well, I mean, I'm just here tonight just to start, we don't, you guys, I'm not asking to make a decision, it just starts the dialogue on, you know, what the plans are and if you decide to deny it, that's fine and we'll pursue another course of action, I guess, with the county attorney, so.
But that's, you're, that's what you agree on those numbers, that it's about eighty thousand?
About that, yeah, yeah.
Difference and that, that it could be handled by just a payment to the county for half of that to balance it out. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, sure, yeah, or, or to the nursing home, you know, if.
Either way.
Either way, so, and it doesn't have to, I don't know. Like I said, my understanding that night was, you know, it wasn't, that you, you didn't have the money and so we could set it, you could set it up over a period of years, you know, to pay back. And that's what people were really upset about the next morning when they called me.
They considered that a loan.
They, that was a loan to the city from the county.
It really wasn't, it was a payment to the care.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, but anyway.
So Danny, you left that meeting and the commissioners were under the impression, we're going to get this eighty bound, extra eighty? Talking about the extra eighty, and you took that out of inheritance?
Yeah.
And?
The care, it had basically affluced the nursing home until the bond issue was voted upon.
Okay.
And there was a lot of discussion that night whether, you know, if the bond issue failed, you know, then we just dumped more money into the care center and we just wasted that. But the commissioners at that time thought it was worth the chance to, you know, to undertake that.
With that agreement, you didn't put one sixty in, you just put eighty, right?
No, no, yeah, just, yeah, just.
Gotcha.
And Andy's got all those numbers and Andy wasn't able to be here because I think they're at Mock, you know, at Mock Drive. So he wasn't able to be here. I just, we've had it on the agenda a couple of times and we've had time things, so I thought I would just start the, start the dialogue. And that's all I have tonight, so you guys.
Well, I appreciate that. My, I guess, my recommendation would be, I mean, Brad isn't here tonight, he's the only councilman that would.
Were you in that, all that discussion?
I was, I was at those meetings, but Brad was the only councilman that would have been at any of those meetings. And so we got it started and we can, we can discuss it next month. Unless you guys want to do something tonight, that's totally your call.
Well, I think if the county thinks that we owe that and with Lisa's research and stuff, she's, you're apparently for sure that we owe that and there was an agreement, at least an unwritten agreement that we were going to pay the county back?
I think you're, you know, over the last three months or five months or whatever it's been, that Michael and I have been going back and forth on it and talking to Andy, I think there, there was two different ways of looking at it. There was one that says there's a fifty-fifty agreement.
Yeah.
So anything one puts in, the other has to match. And then the flip side of that coin was can one and a obligate the other entity if there's not joint agreement? And so.
And I guess we were.
That was, those were the two discussions being.
And we were under the impression from that joint meeting we had that you guys were willing to do that. You said you'd have to go to a council meeting to vote on it and evidently you never went back to a council meeting to vote on it. But the commissioners, and I think about everybody here that night, was under the impression that that was going to be a thing that you guys were going to do and with the idea that you could pay it back three, four, or five year. I think Weeblehouse actually went up to ten years to pay it back over a ten year period.
Ten, that was about, I don't remember everything very well.
So it may not be officially in, in the minutes because I don't know if you got, if you, the city council followed up with an actual vote after that.
I don't think so.
Because it wasn't on the agenda, you know, to do that at that meeting, so you couldn't vote on it that night. And so, but we were sure under the assumption that the city was going to, you know, because that's the original agreement was fifty-fifty.
Well, if that was the intent, in my opinion, and I may not be here when we vote, but I think, you know, I think the city probably has an obligation to reimburse the county.
Or, or to the nursing home?
I, to me, it would be easier just to reimburse the county for half, I think that would work better in our budget and stuff. In my opinion, I think we ought to get, if we can, we get a budget, we ought to get it taken care of and stretch it out over a period of time. That's just my opinion, I don't know what everybody else is.
I'd like to hear from Brad.
So I like to hear from there. Because that was, my, my, my issue is, is like, I wasn't there and I, this is before my time. It was not in the minutes. Was it true, I mean, I'm not denying, was it truly a gentleman's agreement, like that's not how you do business, right? Not in the city and the county is a gentleman's agreement, that's not how that works here, right?
No, but that night, the city council could not vote on it because it wasn't on their agenda to do that. And it has to be publicized, well, the commissioners, we went ahead and did it. And the original agreement is, you know, is fifty-fifty like Lisa says, that's how it was originally drawn up. And that was before my time, as being commissioner, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's any argument about what's owed or not owed or whatever in terms of who's put in what. I think the discussions that I was part of post-July twenty twenty-two on that issue were all about, can the county obligate the city to pay if it hasn't been discussed, you know, because you had a fifty-fifty agreement? And that was kind of, I think everybody was trying to get on the same. And that was kind of, I think everybody was trying to get on the same page about that if there were going to be, of course, it's all mute now because we have the special levy, so we're not contributing extra now, so it's not a big of a deal. But I think the thought at that time was there should be joint agreement. But again, that's, Brad, Brad was here, he can talk to that too.
And I, I guess, from what I'm hearing.
I don't see anything in the minutes, anything was done. You think if there was, if there was somebody here, you would think, all due respect to everybody, you would think that if there was, if you're going to throw around that kind of money, it would be in a minute somewhere. That you guys also discussed an additional eighty thousand dollars. Well, you know, each entity putting in, an additional eighty thousand dollars.
The commissioners did, they put in seventy-six thousand.
Well, they put in eighty. I mean, it was an additional eighty.
Yeah.
The city had some small contributions for minor other things here and there that makes it not quite eighty as the discrepancy is.
And I guess from the commissioner's side, we probably should have come back to the city council and, and put it on the agenda for you guys to vote up or down before we went ahead and made our decision. But again, I think pretty well, there was a gentleman's agreement that night that that's what, how it was going to happen. With city council members sitting here.
I remember, I do remember that we said we, we don't have the money, we don't have the budget authority, we can't do that, you know.
Right.
And that would have to be some potential in the future, so. But yeah, I guess, and you guys can do what you want, but I, my recommendation would be that we put it on the agenda for next month. I think Brad will be here, he could have his input and.
Who are your other councilmen?
Yeah, who else was?
I think it was Vance and Skyler. Skyler.
Vance, Skyler, or Brad?
Brad and Sean.
Sean Furman.
So you could talk to them, they get a chance to visit them, get their, probably, their understanding. Yeah, and we could, we could, uh, do it next month. That's just my recommendation.
Okay, I think we should talk to those ones.
I think we should have a chance to, yeah, hear from them and see what.
I'd take it while I can do the law for minutes, I mean, not that.
I was at those meetings and I, I'd say what Denny's saying was pretty accurate. That's from my recollection, again, that's a lot of years ago, but I think what he's done is relayed pretty accurately the, the conversation. And I think, because I think the county did, and you know, what, what it was under for those council members and commissioners, it was pretty dire, like, they needed money now. And the commissioners did have it on their agenda to potentially vote at that meeting to supply funding. I think the council did not as far as an actual actionable item at a joint meeting to make a vote to supply money that they were saying was needed now.
Well, and I think if I remember right, too, the city wasn't sure we were going to pull that.
Right, I think that's exactly right.
Like, we needed time to look at it.
Yeah, you didn't have it, you didn't have a, you didn't have an inheritance tax fund.
Right, we needed some time to kind of curl through it.
Exactly. And it just obviously then didn't end up happening after that.
So when you're here, Denny, I'm asking, if we do have, where does it go? Does it go to the county or does it go to the care center?
I'd say to make things square, we can just pay the county half of whatever.
And we would put it back in the inheritance fund because that's where it came from.
Follow you.
But I wouldn't be opposed, I'm just speaking for myself now, not the other two board members.
Right.
You know, if you decided to put it in the care center account, I'd be okay with that too, but it probably ought to go back.
Would you run that up the flagpole with your crew?
I can, yeah.
The next meeting?
Yeah. The claim, as Doug said, would be back into the inheritance fund because we keep robbing, well, I shouldn't say robbing, that's what that inheritance fund is for, but it, it's nice to have a little bit in that inheritance fund to meet emergencies, just like in nineteen, we didn't have to borrow money like a lot of counties did. We used our inheritance fund to pay for all the road repairs until we got reimbursed by the feds. A lot of counties had to borrow money.
So then, depending on the discussion and what we decide, you're potentially thinking half of whatever back into your inheritance fund to clear this whole issue up if that's what we agree on.
Yeah, it would be about seventy-six thousand.
Half of the seventy-six.
Yeah.
That's your two options, you'd either be half of the seventy, whatever you got there to the county or the full amount to the care center, yeah.
But that's what you guys decide next month.
Right.
Yeah, and you got it.
Before we table this, can we like, um, you visit with Sean, I'll visit with Vance, and I'll give the new council person a visit with Skyler. All three of us will do that and then we'll be ready to.
See whether Brad will be here and then.
Is that fair, is that sound all right? So I move we table it to next month. Second.
Second table?
You're not even sworn in and we're giving you stuff.
Yeah, right. Well, you should be here to protect yourself tonight as I look on the agenda.
Yeah, Doug's saying, well, Doug's. Throw the call roll. You good with that, Dan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Great.
Kent?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
All right.
Denny, thanks for coming and
Yeah, thank you.
starting that conversation.
Just a dialogue, yeah. Keep up the books straight, one way or the other.
Right.
Appreciate it.
All right, I'm going to go, unless there's somebody here to testify, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Five thirty-five. We can go back up and, uh, take an action if you so desire. For the planning commission, conditional use permit?
I remember when you were at that one.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve, what's this?
Through the planning commissioner recommendation.
Does it have a certain number, that's what?
No.
Gentlemen, are you good to go? I have moved that we approve the planning commission's recommendation to give a conditional use permit to grant stack for the placement of a shipping container on his property, which is located within our one-mile zoning jurisdiction.
Second. Motion and second, are there a discussion?
I would love to see what that number, or something.
Call roll, please.
Dustin? Doug?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. First item is the oath office for Kent and Heather, which I guess is time to thank Doug for filling in admirably.
I don't know about that yet.
No, I appreciate it, I think the community appreciated and your input was valuable. Your experience showed through and, uh, thanks.
Well, glad to do it.
Yeah, there's always opportunities around for office in the future.
I'm just not sure how hard you worked it up after I told you that if you didn't find somebody, then I would do it.
I think you probably saw me ask something.
He was just short of being on his knees with his arms up in the air saying please the last time I saw him.
I think he was already done with everything he could think of.
No, I think, I'm, I know I asked more after that, but dude appreciated it.
Glad to.
I'm looking forward to having to zoom in from Florida.
Please, so. Do we have a plaque? I mean, they already got one plaque, they got one. We just got an etch on there.
Thank you, Doug.
You know, previous councilmen, when they went off, they had free beer and pizza after the meeting for everybody.
I've never had one of those yet.
At the four oh two, right?
See you, Douglas. Now is he going to stay or is he going to leave?
I'm going to sit in the back, but I'm going to sit close to the door. Should we have to bring Heather up? We can do these up this, I believe. Got to do the repeat after eight.
This is longer than the president's oath of office, I'm sure he is. It does take a while, but.
Sure you're not a spy.
For those old people, you have to keep it short.
It's your only government.
And, ready?
Yes.
I, Kent Taylor, Heather Luder.
I, Taylor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the saints.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the saints.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or for purposes of evasion.
Or for purposes of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and aggressively perform.
Faithfully and commercially perform.
The duties of the office of council according to law.
The duties of the office of council according to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party or organization.
Nor am I a member of any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States.
Or of this state by force or violence.
Or of this state by force or violence.
And that during such time as I am in this position.
And that during such time as I am in this position.
I will not advocate nor become a member
I will not advocate nor become a member
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States.
That advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States.
Or of this state by force or violence.
Or of this state by force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There will be a quiz after this, you can remember what you just agreed to.
You're going to be careful.
You're not getting a pardon.
I'm not a big enough crook, huh?
Can't have a number.
No.
My official paperwork sign.
For Brad's not here, he's going to get hit with President for not being here, that's how it's going.
All right, next item on the agenda is, uh, history organization of the council, you need to nominate and appoint a council president.
I nominate, he's done a good job, I think he's going to do it again, so I nominate Dustin Marthell to serve as council president.
Motion and second, accept the nominations?
Yeah.
Is there a roll call voter? Any other nominations?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead and call roll.
Kent?
Yes.
Dustin? I mean, I'm not going to tell you what to do. You can certainly vote for yourself if you like. Or, and Heather?
Yes.
Motion, two to zero with one. Thanks, Dustin, I agree with Kent, he did a good job, appreciate you leading the council.
By the way, Joel just has announced that next month there's a resignation, so you get to become mayor.
I'm just bringing that on the next one.
That's how that works.
Uh, moving on, we will, uh, we don't have any other organizational stuff for the council, right? Next, we're going to discuss new welcome signs. I have Linda, you're here for Brown County, thanks for coming, Linda.
Okay, I've been working on this for a while. And the signs on east and west, you know, the red signs that say welcome names were, we've been looking at replacing those. Like O'Neil and Atkinson have beautiful signs, so this is kind of what we come up with. We are close, um, we're just kind of working with those permits, but.
Your state department of roads? Is that, yeah.
And anyway, we thought we'd have nice signs like they do along Highway twenty. And this is working out pretty well because we have new highway, new main street, that kind of thing. So I think we're close.
You're just replacing two, not all three?
Just the two.
Just the two.
East and west, one.
Oh, yeah, there is one on the south end.
There is, but we're just doing, you know, they're kind of pricey, so we're doing east and west, maybe that come later. Um, like I say, the, the permits, we're kind of waiting on the permits. And I think the one to the west, I think that's been okay by the Lincoln Office, the Department of Roads Office, I don't know, they contacted you, Lisa?
I haven't gotten all the way through my email from being gone, but I thought I saw where Jim sent everything to Tony yesterday.
Okay. And the east? And the east too? It was the west.
The west one sits right by the water tower.
Yeah.
I can't remember where the east was at.
Right by the land filter, right?
Right. Okay, on the north side there. Okay.
Yeah, it is. It is on that, yeah. So, and, uh, we've been working with the Kimber Commerce in, for several years. And, uh, we're finally getting back to it. We did have a question on this, um, west end because where that sign is, and this is going to be a lot bigger, there's the evergreen trees and then there's that maple tree that's kind of a bush. And so we're kind of concerned about, um, that tree and the growth there. I think they're going to move it out about ten feet in front of those evergreen trees. We're concerned about the maintenance as far as keeping those maple trees trimmed. Do you think that'll be an issue with the city?
So those trees going to be in front, are those trees going to be in front of the sign?
No.
They're behind it.
The evergreen trees are behind it, but you know, they, they grow out, so.
They could encroach on it?
But the maple tree is, you know, the spring and summer, the maple tree is, and it's more like a big bush because it's, isn't, it's just not a tree trim, it's several there. So in order to see the sign, we're just concerned about, you know, how we'll handle, handle that with maintenance and keeping those trimmed.
Technically, right now, the city maintains all of the signs. And all of the grounds around the signs are, there's no biggie.
And the east, the east won't be a problem, it's just that there's foliage over there.
So you just need, your, the tree just needs to be trimmed up, it doesn't need to be removed?
You know, I think it needs to be trimmed up. If you thought it needed to be removed, that would be okay too.
I'd have to look at, I don't know, I can't picture what it looks like.
So you put these up?
Potentially transplant to make the street.
Light these up somehow?
I think it's a tree.
I know, are you going to, are you going to light them up?
At some point, we're going to look at solar lights.
Now maybe just getting some nice illuminated ones or?
Is there power there?
That's what I'm saying, like, is there a way to make them illuminated, like a nice?
I don't think they're illuminated now, some places there's not power there.
We were going to do solar, solar lights.
Um, you're pouring these on a pad, it looks like, then if you're doing brick?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're going to tell us how much one costs?
Um.
I'm just curious, if it's not, if you're still getting bids or something, don't say that publicly, let me put it that way.
No, um, love signs is going to do.
Okay, so you've decided.
Yeah. And they, they're close to being done.
You like it?
I mean, I like, I like the sign, like the idea, not.
Some public dollars, please.
Not in public dollars, please don't let it cost us.
Same, but I can, I can say something better.
But I, I would like to see us go ahead, and if we're gonna put a nice sign out there, at least see what it'd cost to illuminate it or have it illuminated sign, kinda like what the golf course has. Something.
Yeah, we'll take, check into that.
Is it all based on a solar system, or is it just electrical?
It's electrical, it's an internal electrical one.
But it's got power too?
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's, there's a power pole with a yard light on it, very close, just north of it.
Linda, those are tax dollars, you can tell us what the cost was for each one.
Well, the down payment so far was fourteen thousand. And, you know, the second payment is close to that, but they'll be taxed and whatever else.
So around fifteen thousand apiece?
Probably, so.
Uh, I can't remember offhand, is the one on the west side, is there any landscaping besides the trees and stuff around it? Is there like woodchipping?
Yeah, I think there is, wasn't there woodchips?
That's what I have in my head, that I, you know, you drive by it and you know.
Blissish. They're so blissish.
If they had flowers planted around them, or they done a lot of them?
I just thought this one is wider than the current, like, yeah, there's alterations that need to be made to the ground, they're, I don't know.
The, is the west side, is that close to electricity there? Anybody know?
Well, the, the tower is not far from, no, yeah, the tower's right there. But we can look into that.
But anyway, just, um, kinda wanted to let you know that we're working on it.
So are you seeing our pool tonight later, or?
Just letting you know that it's there, cause it's been in the process, in the works for.
Does the back say anything, or it's just blank? Like, thanks for coming, or just blank?
Which is, yeah.
I don't think you probably wouldn't see the back, the way they're positioned.
No, that would.
The, yeah, the, the east one, it says dump one mile north.
When does he quit? They look nice.
Anyway.
Yeah, they do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
When will they, any tentative timetable?
Well, we're hoping this fall, but we're waiting on the permit, so it's like a warm set, we'll be seeing.
Fall is, fall is leaving us.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, discuss and consider parking on Main Street.
This really isn't on Main Street, this is on Third Street. And I talked to the state, when they did that, there was a break in the concrete that they could, you know, like a driver going up to the doors there. When they put that in, there's no break in now, and, uh, before Kevin Shaw, it was always painted out, no parking there. And for delivery and everything. But now, the state said I had to come to the city to get that painted again. Because we'd have a little problem with some of the residents across the street wanna park in there. They'll take up two parking places parked in parallel, as your enforcement officer saw the other day, which cars parked there for five days like that. And, uh, we'd like to have that designated again, no parking there. We have deliveries come in, and FedEx does not, if they can't get there, they just set them out on the corner. In the same way with the flowers that come in at night, if that's there. So I guess I'm asking if the city will designate that again like it was before. Cause they wouldn't repaint if they said the city had to do that, when I talked, uh, part of it.
Is that where those two, I would, I drove around there today, was that where?
Yeah, there's the two doors right there.
Two white doors on the, be the south side of that building?
Yeah.
Right there?
Yeah. So.
So, my first question is, why aren't there horizontal lines for parking there like there are on Main Street?
The state said the city had to do that.
I was gonna say, I think there's, again, another misunderstanding between the city and the state. I think we thought that the state was repainting everything that the state did, but I'm hearing.
So they're just doing main, but we're gonna need to get stripes on all these side streets anyway. But it's gonna be spring now.
Yeah, and I, and I realize that, I mean.
Yeah, right, I mean, that's, no, I didn't realize there was parallel parking there, though, that's.
Can you, going the other way?
Like, can you compromise, well, I don't know about, I basically don't want people coming around here saying, yeah, I'm gonna block off this part of the parking, this part of the parking. Would a compromise of like, a sign or something agreeable, like fifteen minute parking only?
Well, yeah, anything.
You know, like something, so they're not.
Keeping it there for five days solid.
Right, or messing up your delivery, but they're still able to pull in there and park and shop.
And right now, I mean, I got the picture of it, he's parked right there in front of them two doors again.
We appreciate you having him move, but now he's just moved down the ways, and he's gonna be there all week.
Yeah.
And it just sits there.
I would also like to point out, that that is also an emergency snow route, right there. From Woodward to Walnut Street on Third and Second is a snow route going east and west.
On Third Street?
Mm-hmm.
So.
From Walnut to Woodward, east and west, on Third Street, Second Street, is an emergency snow route.
So what are you gonna do when they're sitting there, when it snows too?
He's gonna have to find them, so, I mean, we're gonna have to do something, cause they're.
I agree.
It's always an issue, every year, for snow.
But with it being, you know, emergency snow route.
But where else are those people supposed to park?
I mean, we're gonna have to do something, find them, put parking, you know.
Well, it, it's costing, I mean, they're, well, you've seen it, they're.
All night, all day.
So they don't have a lot to park.
So, um, the residents, those were, go ahead, I say it's the residents that are living across the street from us.
Is there?
Then they have no parking, I guess, but I thought that.
There, I mean, it'd be like any other downtown municipality, especially large cities, I mean, they're gonna park wherever they can find a place to park.
Well, that's closest to them.
Right, that's closest, and definitely, it's probably not gonna happen now, the weather changed, we gotta get some stripes painted on all those streets. Uh, those were probably painted yellow in the past because that was an old automotive shop.
Right, and Kevin somewhere repainted them when he was doing it, I talked to him. All he said was, I've had so much trouble with them, he said, I'll come do it, but there's no guarantees.
About what kind of trouble?
About the parking, and dealing with the people that was living there.
I gotta say, I'm sympathetic to your cause, I don't wanna set precedent.
No.
And the deal is, if I give you a fifteen minute parking sign, pharmacy's gonna want one, home health's gonna want one. I mean, that's, that's, that's the deal, then you open it up a can of worms.
Can we just paint that, like it was before?
But it's, it's not a cut curb anymore.
No, that's true.
You know, it was only painted that because that goes back to, I can't even remember, but at one time, you, I'm not saying you're old.
Yeah, I remember.
Remember when they pulled cars in there? That's the reason it was, that's the only reason that was painted different, I think, wasn't it? Doug, you're old too, do you remember?
Yes, you're right. Thanks for that.
So, I mean, the, I'm just saying, like, that's why I was trying to compromise if there was a fifteen minute parking spot, or one, or whatever.
So, there are other businesses that get deliveries down that side street, and there's the pharmacy.
That car's sitting there, and it's been there for two days now, and I'll bet it's there for another four or five. And I'll take pictures.
If the car not parked right, we will deal with ordinance wise.
Plus if it's an emergency snow route, they'll have to be marked every time it snows, you gotta get it off of there.
Yeah, only those.
Declare emergency, not regular snow.
Right?
Norfolk, give her an emergency snow route, it snowed, you just got it off of there.
Well, yeah, it's always a deal, I mean.
They're gonna have to go pull it around the corner, or down to the park, or, I mean, you gotta.
In years past, we have had to call the sheriff's office, and, you know, let them, or call, like, the D N W office, cause those, the people in there are employees. You know, they would help us get those vehicles moved, but it's always a.
Your enforcement officer ticketed, they walked by and they just got them, they wouldn't do nothing, I stood right there and watched them. They would walk by and look at that ticket, but they wouldn't go look at it. And I guess I was told because they can't read English, and would have to get a interpreter for them.
And that particular person is not employee of Sandy Park, cause I did talk to Sherri Johnson last week. She thought maybe he was employed with the B Jot, B Jot's B Jot, so.
I guess I'm inclined to, you know, initially try to deal with it through code enforcement, and, uh, you know, I think from talking with Kelsey, a lot of these things have corrected themselves. This one might be a tougher nut to crack, it might take a little more concerted effort, but, I mean, that would be my, my inclination would be to go that way. I think parking in general, well, it's changed with the highway project, there's gonna be a lot of differences in parking now on Main Street. And it might take a little time to figure out what the best thing to do, and I would hate to rush into any decisions until we see what the, the patterns are gonna be for folks. But that's just, that's just me brainstorming.
Now, you can tell your driver, they can stop and turn their flashers on to deliver, that is legal. They can stop right in the street. Are they aware of that?
I guess I am.
Well, I think, I think Brad is a UPS driver.
Yeah. No, I think, it's allowed by COVID.
And sometimes there's nowhere else for the trucks to go.
Right. So, you need to tell them, they can do that, if people are just gonna have to work their way around it, I mean, that's laws, it's allowed. You ever go to Manhattan, they double park, and then the UPS guy still parks in the middle street, and you wait while he delivers his bag. So seriously, to help you on that side.
Well, the other thing is, it was there, it was, and since I have flower deliveries to funerals, and I'm packing up an entire vehicle full of flowers, especially this time of year. Being able to get close to my door and not truck it down the end of the block. Because the guy who never moves his car is parked in front of the building, in front of the doors. You know, there's, people are really good going to and from the other businesses, from the pharmacy, and from Kathy, you know, the, the bank, and everybody. Everybody does a really nice job, they're just moving in and out, the employee parked clear down the block, which is great, you know, we all try and make it as easy as we can. But our car doesn't move all week, it's, it's a little tougher. And again, having had it there, I guess maybe we were just assuming that it would come back so that we had that ease of loading and unloading, especially, not only for deliveries, but also for outgoing stuff from the store. Appreciate the consideration.
My personal likes fifteen man, I think. We could get some stripes obviously painted, but.
I mean, that would at least solve the parallel parking issue, if there's, if there are some stripes painted in.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to give Kelsey a chance to work on it, and, I mean, I, it sounds like they might be ignoring things at this point, but they might not ignore it when their car gets towed away a couple times.
That's, uh, I think with that particular vehicle, I think with that situation, it's a language barrier, because I have, um, ticketed other standings in town, and they have all, except this one, have come to the city office with a ticket and questioned it. And I would just explain it to them, and it got corrected. But with this particular person, I discussed it last week, that I might have to possibly tow him for him to figure out that you can't do that.
And I noticed when Kevin painted the lines, they still park there regardless.
Yeah.
It didn't matter.
No, that's what he said.
So, painting the line, they go, saw enough, you're gonna have to kick it in or tow him, or to make him understand that you can't park there, it was my opinion.
Yeah.
And, and I just wanted to just see, bring to your attention, I mean, I know your hands are tied, I dealt similar problems, you know, official for fourteen years, so. I'm not asking you to, any special privileges or anything, just to consider that he parks there for four or five days in a row that way, and you witnessed it.
That's what I was saying, maybe if there was just one spot, that was able to keep your business flowing, but not hinder the rest of the, you know.
Yeah.
Spots per se, but then I don't wanna set a precedence and cause all kinds of fifteen minute parking.
Does the pharmacy not have their fifteen minute parking anymore, cause they used it in the past?
Right, they see, like, that's, that's what I got, is the pharmacy had it. I'm assuming for that reason, but it's, it's gone.
Well, it was taken down, red, red, and that's a city, that's under the city of Hurville. My understanding was, from talking to Brad, council members, that went on at the time that that passed, was because once upon a time, home health was there. And so, they put that there to help some of the elderly people coming in and out. Of course, you know, when the, the business changed, the signs changed, but.
Well, they were scared for the pharmacy. They would come back to ask for it, I mean, so. Well, these guys are asking for something, right?
Anything else, anybody, I mean, is this somebody I have to take action on, or is there someone that's gonna?
I'm not asking you guys to take action or anything tonight, or any, you can decide on yourselves what you wanna, what you think's proper and everything. But I'm not asking for special treatment or anything, or for you to set a precedence for every business to want that either. It's just a, it's, it's very annoying, especially if he's parked parallel, or if he parks for five days right there.
Right.
So.
Well, appreciate you coming in, and.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it, thank you.
I do, I do think we're gonna have to see how the parking patterns develop here, and.
Probably address some of this.
I, yeah, you know, I, the last time, this, this is not the first time we've talked about parking here in the last couple of years. I think, you know, we might, to me, it's something to consider doing everywhere, it's like two hour parking on Main Street, or something like that, potentially. But I, again, I think we just need to see how things progress with the new, reduced parking spaces.
You can put up parking meters and paint them green, instead of the tree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With a flower plant or something, so funny.
All right. So along those lines, I did notice, and I used one the other day, I guess all that parking, like, configuration on Main Street, that was all the state realized. Cause they put two parallel ones there by the area. I parked my vehicle there, and I had to think, you know, that's probably not too smart when an eighteen wheeler comes around the corner, so. Cause those, were those parking before?
No.
Okay.
No, there's been, there was, there's a few changes, just.
Cause there's two parallel spots there.
There's a parallel spot down by the cowboy trail too, which, I mean, that's fine, I think people, I think they do pull after, or go later.
Well, between the post office drive-through in the corner of the west side, there's parallel parking there, yeah. And I did that, and then I thought, I better hunt.
Yeah, and then down by Century, like you said, I think it's just south of their door, there's two, three spots.
If you're in the north one, I'm surprised they don't have a turning radius guide, cause somebody in a, trying to swear, okay. But I didn't know if that was, I didn't figure that we had anything doing that.
All right, moving on, we could skip this next one.
Well, the way he's acted in that, I think we probably should.
You should've waited until you're over.
Moving on, discussing conservative administrative subdivision request of claimsman addition, block two lot one, and the east eighty-eight of block two.
So, yeah, so this is a request for a subdivision to take basically one lot and put it into two. So there's a, kind of a storage building behind the user's star journal there, that is wanting to be subdivided off away from the build, greater building to the north. So, that's the documents that you have in front of you. So that's the documents that you have in front of you. Todd is here, talking to the.
So you're putting A and B into one parcel, separate from the rest of it? And there's no alley or easement in between? There is there. Behind your building and between your storage shed, that's not a, that's all.
It's just all part of the lot.
It's all part of the lot, yeah. Yeah. Building for sale?
Eventually.
It'll sell within that one. I say, when somebody's gonna shop like that for sale, it'll sell within the hour. Well. It's pretty straightforward, isn't it, Lisa? There's no.
I don't really think there's any major issues to consider.
It'd be about the same as those two lots right to the west of it, so by second, correct, with the building on there.
Yeah, that's a different one, right, yeah.
Yeah. So you don't want to break those.
The storage shed away from the Star Journal building.
I'm surprised they're not already.
On a separate lot?
Yeah.
Retirement breaking bad mess lab's gone.
Yeah.
No, he's gotta keep that building, he's gotta move all his.
Oh, he's still.
Ball clubs from the Star Journal, the storage building, so, um, is this an ordinance?
Um, no, but you do have to vote and, uh, yeah, and A, whether you approve it.
It's not three readings or.
It's not an ordinance.
Or, no, I have an open hearing.
Move to approve.
Yeah, so I move that we allow the administrative subdivision of Plainsman Edition Block Two Lot One and the east eighty-eight foot feet of Block Two. Does that sound right?
Um, yes.
Yeah, I'll second. Motion on the second. Any other discussion? Will I call roll?
Dustin?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Motion is carried, unanimous.
Before everybody gets away, if you could please.
Where'd you put that up, Ron?
We moved into the bill, into the Star Journal in two thousand, I think I had that built in twenty, in two thousand three, I think, somewhere around in there.
Had Philbin already left by then?
No, he was behind, behind, behind there, yeah.
Moving on, discuss, uh, reconsideration of point four dash oh nine, authorizing the marriage sign, the retainer, and Heather's ticketed. Back to Zara L. Eight Forty Attorney for the City of Azor. We've had Heather for a number of years now as our attorney. She kinda has a lot of expertise in L. B. Eight Forty. I think she's the attorney for a number of cities, actually, in that regard. Uh, Michael doesn't necessarily deal with L. B. Eight Forty legislation a lot, so, uh, and we, I don't know if we used Heather this past year, but it's always nice to have her available if questions come up.
Yeah, we really only use Heather for, like, business loan filings and documents, and then if the C. A. R. C. meets and has policy recommendations or revisions or things like that, you know, that all kind of runs through her involved her before those are approved, but, um.
Is their rate the same for the retainer?
I believe so. I think it maybe went up a little bit last year, but this two hundred dollars, I think, is what it was last year also. I think maybe it had been one seventy-five once upon a time.
But this, this one is two hundred dollars per hour?
Yes, yep. And like I said, we, we really, we really don't need to pay very often or very much.
I'll make a motion for Heather to see if it can be, I'll be, attorney proceeding.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any other discussion?
Roll.
Heather?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. I just have one other thing, but I'll, I'll get to that after Lisa's report. That's next on our agenda, the city administrator, the treasury report.
We did have our financial audit, um, with AMGO on Tuesday, December third. They were originally booked to be here the third and the fourth. There was four of them, they came in, and super efficient, and they just go over. And they were done by the end of the day on Tuesday, and said they weren't coming back, so. Anyway, I, I feel like, I mean, I could be wrong, but I feel like it went reasonably pretty well. Didn't seem to have any major concerns, at least none that they relate to us, so.
Well, if they were digging for stuff, they had, you know, searching their files.
Yeah. So, um, anyway, it was, they're a very easy group to get along with. They're very efficient. I mean, they come in and they, they do their thing, they, they pull what they want, and they put everything back very nicely when they're done, and away they go, so.
They haven't requested two extensions yet. More.
Anyway, I guess, uh, you know, the, the audit reported due at the end of March, so I'm sure they'll kind of continue to work on the backend a little bit yet. And, uh, last year, they came and presented the report at the May council meeting, I believe, so I would anticipate that they will do the same. Sometime April, May, whatever, they'll be back in, I'm just gonna go through the report with all of you. Clear back when, uh, Wendy resigned, you know, we had advertised that front desk position, kind of as a part-time position, and didn't probably hire it. But I have had some discussions with Sandy Sisson, she's retiring, uh, at KBR, Real Public Power. And, uh, maybe is still kind of interested in a little bit of part-time work, so she and I have had some meetings and decided that that will be maybe a good relationship moving forward, so. She's going, anticipating to start at the city office on the twenty-first of January, and to work just part-time hours, maybe twenty-three, twenty-four hours a week.
She's taking off three weeks, she's back there.
Yes, yes. So we're kind of excited about that, because it's a very similar transition for her in terms of the, the type of work, and so I think I think that's a good fit for both of us, hopefully, so. So that'll be a new change coming up for us, and then, um, I guess just a heads up to all the council, uh, we're probably going to be onboarding our upgrade to the cloud software here any day, um, in December, early January. And I'm anticipating there's gonna be some issues, so just bear with us, um, on things for a while, maybe, if, if there are. I don't know that there will be, but there's been a lot of chatter from other cities that have already done it. And it sounds like they have had lots of struggles, so I'm just thinking probably the same one for us. So I guess, just, that's more of a heads up, that I anticipate that as soon as we flip the switch on that, that it might give us some headaches and whatever.
And that's your accounting system?
It's everything.
Everything, so it'll be billing, it's gonna be.
It's everything. So, you know, we've, kind of over the last month, I would say, we've been doing a lot of surveys and data prepping and data exports and all kinds of things, and we've had some people remoting in and doing some things to kind of prepare. But it kind of sounds to me like, and I'm trying to stay optimistic and give them the benefit of the doubt, but from what I'm hearing, it may be some of the bugs weren't totally worked out yet, so I'm just thinking it could be a real headache, so, I don't know. I'll just stay tuned on that, and we'll try to keep our sanity in. But anyways.
I guess I might just add, you talked about Sandy, uh, part-time. The goal there is, since Kelsey started, she's had to spend a lot of time helping at the front desk, and that's been great to get her in tune with all the city business, but now this will free her up to spend more time at the intended purpose of that, so.
And I think she and I have talked some, maybe this winter, and when Sandy comes on, where she won't be stretched as much to the office duties, helping us here and there, that, um, she can kind of dive into the vacant building stuff a little bit more, because that's gonna be kind of time consuming. So she'll, she'll be taking on some other things, too, above and beyond what she's already been doing, so. And I think that's a good fit for the code enforcement officer, because it kind of really overlaps with nuisance and everything else, so.
All right. I guess this isn't actually on the agenda, but I did wanna, I think we should recognize Rob World. For his forty years of covering city council meetings, as well as tons of other community, uh, meetings and events, and I guess we'll, uh, we'll miss you, but you can still come to the meeting, but I mean.
I have to have somebody know.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all the effort over here. We continue to call you for past history.
Well, you can try. My memory's going, though.
And just let me know what committees you wanna be on.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're a city resident. You don't get easy answers.
So Lisa, is your plan to publish in both, Springview and Rock Valley?
Well, certain, there's certain, uh, things where we're a city with a population of less than twenty-five hundred people. There are certain stipulations where we can, like, post, and if we don't have a newspaper of circulation, you can post in three places. So, um, you know, the care center kind of does that now, the KBR always kind of does that now.
What's your three places?
Well, for those entities, it's usually the city building, maybe the courthouse, the post office.
Oh.
And then sometimes KBRB can be recognized.
So what, uh, what I have been, because I've been thinking about this too, and even though we, it doesn't solve your issue of having to publicize in a, in a legal publication, but just from the standpoint of trying to get those notices to people in an accessible way.
Yeah.
What I'd like to do is put a page, a dedicated page on our website, come around to all the entities, and, you know, for a pretty small charge, we would post your meeting minutes.
Legal notices.
Do the, your, post your legal notices, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in print, so it doesn't satisfy your state requirements, but just for an access point for pub, for the public, and then what we do is we, we run, we promote that on air to try to, especially early heavily, to try to get people aware of that, but what we do is, our, our site draws over two thousand page views a day, so we, we're heavily, we've got a lot of traffic on our site, so what, you know. My hope was that we would keep the Star Journal going somehow, but if that doesn't happen, then my thought would be, we could put something, we would put a dedicated page on our website, just like you click on our other pages that we have, and, and then we would, you know, would have it for any of the public entities that wanna do that. Like I said, it doesn't, doesn't absolve, but it, it is certainly, would certainly count, I think, for one of your postings, yeah, places.
So legal for us, it's just the three. You don't have to have it in newspapers.
For meeting notices and things like that.
Yeah, it depends on what it is.
Yeah, if you don't have a record in your county.
It depends on what it is.
Yeah.
And so there are maybe some other things that we'll still have to, and that's why I guess I, I just listed everybody, because I
Yeah.
Thought that way.
And you can put it in those two, but unless their readership increases.
And who knows what.
It's gonna be doing the legal requirements, but it's sure not gonna.
And you don't, she listed both of them, but you don't have to publish it in both.
Right.
You're one or the other type thing.
But that's kind of as I, as I've thought about that, and just, because I, I read, I read those every week, just to see if I'm missing anything, you know, and, uh.
Well, the other option for the city's website could maybe be utilized more fully than what we've been using it.
Yeah, that was just something, and you're, I haven't talked to any other entities yet, but that's just something I'm kind of thinking about on, can we make this an ease of access to a place people are already going?
For the ease of people being able to find.
Now, in today's electronic world, why isn't that legal?
The press association is fighting like that every time the legislators try to enact it.
Okay, I get it. You, it's a fight between you two, and I, I get it.
No, not, it's the press assoc, they're being, they're being a senator would try to introduce a bill to say governmental liberties can just post onto your websites, and the press association's got a pretty good lobby.
It's, it's determined, it's determined by the state.
Right.
You know, and the.
It's a, it's a statute by the legislature.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And they did make some changes.
Oh, yeah, they, they make periodic changes, that type of thing.
It's not, we don't wanna.
One, one of the nice changes was, is the state sets the, uh, amount that newspapers are paid for, legal publications, and they finally raised it, it was raised over a two-year increment, but they finally raised it here about, uh, two, three years ago, and it was the first time it'd been raised since eighty-six. So.
So we owe you a round of applause.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Free. All right, well.
Thanks, it's fine.
Well, the kind of challenge, I'm sure, and for trying to find the best streamline.
Yeah.
You know, so that the residents know where to go to find them. We'll work through it.
All right, well, I think we've covered everything. Appreciate everybody's time. We're gonna adjourn at six twenty-five.